He said he got a haircut, I said I go.
You got a good look on that.
My hair was getting bad.
With the conference coming up.
I had to grab all my ears and stuff.
He says nothing. He's not.
You got the scoop on this now, how it works?
Yeah.
Can't be in a hurry like we're used to be.
Yeah, you have to blink before we can vote.
Yeah.
Did you?
No.
Connie?
Yes. You wait for the lights to come on before you press.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks Mr. Chairman. I had training yesterday.
You did?
Yeah, because I didn't want to have a blonde moment up here on the dais.
Good morning, please join me in a flag salute in a moment of silence. I pledge...
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda today is the presentation of keys from the Posey Fire Department to Tulare County. The President of the Posey Auxiliary Fire Department, Dennis Fivler, has joined us today to comment on some of the work the organization has accomplished during the last eight years. Dennis, could you please come forward?
Good morning Supervisors. I represent a community in your county of probably about 150 full-time individuals that live there and maybe up to 2,000 on weekends, so it's not a big community, but we've got an organization nonprofit which is called Posey Auxiliary Fire Department, or Fire Board. We collected $63,000 over the last eight years and we do two fundraisers a year, so the community has come together for that smaller community to purchase what we call a response vehicle necessary in our vehicle. It's four-wheel drive, it's small, can get in areas that the larger trucks can't get into. Ninety-some percent of our calls are medical, so it's fully equipped with a D-Fib and all the stuff necessary for medical. We even, as far as I know, we're probably the only one in the county that's now being trained for ropes so we can rescue people on the side of mountains, so, which is pretty good with the fire department. I'd like to turn over the keys. Before I do, I'd like to make a couple special thanks. About six, seven months ago, we met with Supervisor Mike Innes, the Fire Chief Steve Sunderland, and two of his reps, or two of his division chiefs, John Carvallo and Ted Mendoza. Without them, we wouldn't be here today probably. They led us down what, at the time, we might have thought, well, is this the right road? But this is a fantastic vehicle for what we need in our mountains. They've done a good job of fixing our facility up there, and I know Mike's done some pushing in the back that he doesn't think we know, but a couple of the divisions have told me, so we want to thank you for doing that. But we're proud at this point, and I know you guys got a lot on your agenda, so I won't go any further, to present this truck to the county. Hopefully, the first life it saves up there, we'll let you know. But well worth the money, and we're glad to be part of it, so I will give the keys to Mike.
Dennis, before you do that, could you introduce your men?
Oh, excuse me. We have seven volunteer firefighters on the mountain. Our average age of these volunteer firefighters are probably about 60 years old, just to let you know how old we are.
There's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah. Mike Lahardoo is our chief, or what I call our chief, he's volunteer, but to me, he's my chief. And he's been there from day one when this started, so Jeff Armstrong, who is our captain, our live-in captain up there right now, his wife is actually getting certified EMT and going to become a part-time fireman too, so really good. And you guys know John Carvallo, the division chief, and Steve Sunderland, so I don't need to go through them, but, and we have a couple people in the audience, but we worked hard, the community did it. I think most of us understand that everybody wants part of that buy you guys spend, and you don't have enough money to go buy, so instead of griping, we met with Mike and said, hey, what can we do? And he said, give me more money. That's not true, yeah. I think he was shocked that we had the money we had and said, hey, but we're not done, we've got some other things we want to do, and I know the chief and his administration are working hard with us right now, which worried us at first, and probably the best thing that's happened, this change that we took over July 1st, is when we took it over, the chief's done everything that he's promised and probably more, so we're happy with that. We're not trying to take a lot of glory here, but the community did a good thing, and we want to make sure that everybody understands how hard, I think, the fire department has worked with us to get where we are today. And it is a, if you have time, you haven't seen it, it's out front, it's equipped with, for this size equipment, everything you can get, it's got foam, it's got water, it's got a little cannon in the middle you can shoot with, you know, being 60 years old, I can be 10 again, so it's kind of nice, so. Again, I'm going to present the keys to Mike, and we thank you very much.
I want to present these now to the fire department. They're going to be in control of it, but what a great view, what a great view. Congratulations, you're going to get a job up there too.
That's the right guy for you.
But they just...
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I thought we were going to get to drive it. Supervisor Cox?
Before he gave the keys away, Mike, I thought you were going to let me...
We're offering supervised rides in the parking lot, not to leave the parking lot, by the way. I'd like to personally thank Dennis and Mike for spearheading the effort in the community. Without their support and endurance, eight years is a long time to try and accomplish a single task, and they hung in there and they got it done, to coin a phrase, Supervisor Worthley. So we're very proud of the community involvement up there, their group has grown by a couple of engineers, firefighters. Dennis made comment to the newest firefighter, that would be Shannon Armstrong, and that's Mrs. Captain Armstrong, by the way, so actually, the Posey Fire Station is going to be the first in the county to have an immediate two-person response during the night. Anyway, thank you very much for the opportunity to serve, and if there's any questions, we'll be glad to field them. I'd like to bring you back to the board. Brad Conway?
How exciting is this, and my hats off to you folks and to the community, to have a goal and to stick with it for that amount of time. I don't know, I think I would have been too anxious, but to save the money and to have a goal and to make this effort on behalf of your community, and then to turn it over to someone else when it's been your baby, we're just very appreciative. I can't think of a better example of community service and a community that really cares about, for everyone in the area, so kudos and thank you so much.
Supervisor Cox?
I'll make mine brief, I'm a hands-on guy too, and I appreciate what you've done. You saw a need and you went out and took care of that need, so thank you.
Don't give him the keys.
I'd like to be 10 again, too.
He's okay to fire, just let him out in a flood. Mr. Chairman, I just was going to say that I think this is another example of why I'm so glad that we went with our own fire department, because of the flexibility and so forth that we're able to have, and I think we will see more of this type of interaction with our local communities with our own county fire department. And it's not an aspersion on CDF, but, you know, they run on a statewide model and it's different, and we're a local county and we can run on our own, what's best for Tulare County, and I think what we see today is what's best for Tulare County.
I think this is a prime example of something I learned when I was campaigning for this position, is that the community, the people in the community actually are the ones who get everything done. It's commitment by volunteers who give back to their communities, and what you have done, and I'm very proud of the goals that you've set and that you've attained those goals. But the board of supervisors is a small part of what really needs to get done in the county, and you're proof of what initiative it takes in these, in our communities to better the lives of our residents. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Supervisor Innes.
And I'd also like to say, I like it when a plan comes together, but also, I am a person that truly believes in goal-setting, and you guys have set a goal, got all the roadblocks out of the way, and made it happen, and I'll tell you, the community up there really has to be commended, you've done a great job, and I really enjoy working with you guys, I sure do. You're just a good community. Now, Mr. Chairman, if we could, I'd like to take about a 15-minute recess, and we'll all go out and look at the new fire truck parked right out front.
Can only 10-year-olds go, or does everybody get...
Just keep Cox off the cannon. I just wonder what the cannon's working here. We'll take a 10-minute recess.
Thank you.
Steve, you're everyone.
Today, the open moment of the board, I'm the 27th, the board is supposed to be anybody else wants to do, but we will have an open house from 11:30 to 2:30 at the fire station, free cocktails, chips, and drinks, and whatever, and it's to thank Tulare County for what you've done, all of you are invited.
Thank you.
We need to have a moment. Anyway.
Because I just look out right in the now, Molly.
I didn't know that.
For the reason you guys decided not to do the voting part, we'll still leave Live Manager here, the new version of Live Manager, because it's a free upgrade, so we can turn the pause button on after the 30th either way.
Welcome for our region, a partnership of our local cities and counties.
I think that we need to just start reading.
I think if I'm not going to do it, we need all...
It isn't the same, Brad Conway, I guess, and looking to the left, that's the corner of the track, and we have, according to the size, we're not going to say the right one, and we're the first time we're going to do that.
You don't have to worry about it.
Down in LA, I mean, I wouldn't do anything about it, so.
Down in LA.
It may have been, I wouldn't do anything about it, so.
It may have changed, the first month, we obviously didn't do it, because like what she planned it, the first couple months, it's like, it's been a little slow, it's been, it's been, it's been really hard.
Yeah, part of it, but after you pass the part, you get to do a bracket, so probably two months, and it's very, 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 very.
We have, 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 We're going to go down South Moonie Boulevard in Packwood Creek and I'm here to tell you if there's any representative of block stores here who aren't coming forward. They will in the next month because I'm going to go see them all personally and I appreciate your support and have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Are there any other public comments? Seen, uh, not seen any, we're going to close the public comment period. Move to item number six. Probation part.
Jan Honado, probation. This morning I've been asked to give you a kind of a thumbnail sketch of what's happening on the Sacramento front, which is the SB 81 and the AB 191 and its impact on probation. Let me start by starting up my. Yes, no faith. Okay, the first thing I'm going to do is start with a little bit of history. Since July 2004, the California Youth Correction System, formerly known as the California Youth Authority, has operated under a court monitored consent decree as the result of a lawsuit. By entering into the decree, the state acknowledged problems and began restructuring things. The CYA is now known as the Division of Juvenile Justice, or DJJ, as I'll refer to it throughout. The restructuring process revealed that meeting the consent decree requirements would necessitate yearly expenditures exceeding $250,000 per ward. Faced with this reality, the administration shifted to the current institutional downsizing strategy, placing greater responsibility for the juvenile corrections at the county level. Wards in the Division of Juvenile Justice institutions are generally between the ages of 15 and 24, with the average age of about 19 and a half years old. Most first time admissions to DJJ are made by the juvenile courts in all of the counties and include offenders who have committed both misdemeanors and felonies. Generally, the juvenile justice system is the local responsibility and most wards are placed under the supervision of county probation departments. Only the most serious and chronic juvenile offenders have been committed to DJJ and become the responsibility of the state. Along comes Senate Bill 81. On August 24, 2007, the governor signed Senate Bill 81 that shifted nonviolent juvenile offenders out of the secure facilities operated by the State Division of Juvenile Justice and into county facilities and county programs. As of September 1st, delinquent wards could no longer be committed to the State Division of Juvenile Justice unless he or she is found to have committed a serious and violent offense listed in the Welfare and Institutions Code, Section 707B. I'll take a minute here to define that for you because you're going to be hearing non-707 and 707. Non-707Bs are minors who do not qualify if they were charged as an adult to be sent to the youth authority. In other words, those are not murderers, those are not violent crimes, they are not 245A assault with a deadly weapon. They are primarily multiple offenders, they are burglars, they are property crimes. So when we talk about the kind of child that is going to be returning here, I should correct myself, the type of ward who is going to be returning here, they are not your violent offenders as a whole. Now, they are gang offenders. Uh, many of them have been referred for the 186.22, which is the gang enhancement that you hear about, um, and they will be coming back into our community. Counties are now responsible for the custody and care of the nonviolent juvenile offenders who can no longer be sent to state institutions. All nine non-707 wards currently on DJJ parole caseloads prior to September 1st become county responsibility if their parole is suspended or revoked by DJJ. The counties are provided with block grant funding to pay for local alternatives to state commitments. The subsidy will provide the means for tailoring, interventions and developing a continuum of non-institutional services that are currently unavailable. Assembly Bill 91 was very important to the probation department, primarily because Tulare County had 47 minors that were supposed to come back to the county within the next 11 months and 14 of those were sex offenders. So we lobbied quite vigorously to get that modified so that we can continue to send sex offenders that are 290 registrants to the youth authority, excuse me, DJJ. And also they will come out on parole and not come out on probation. So the first thing that Bill 191 did was the sex offenders who are registrable under Section 290 of the Penal Code will continue to be housed in DJJ facilities and will continue to be supervised by parole agents. The parole board now determines eligibility for parole. Just because probation now has to take over the case and doesn't mean we have anything to do with releasing them. So once the parole board sits and decision that this youngster, this young adult is ready to be returned to the community, they then advise him that he will be contacted by a probation officer and he will go to juvenile court and he will have probation supervision implemented. The local parole agency is going to be retaining supervision of those young people for approximately 15 court days after they're out of the institution. This gives us a transition period to do all the paperwork and run around and do what we need to do. We have had four minors, not minors, I keep trying to say minors because juveniles are minors. These are young adults. Um, we had actually out of the 37 that we ended up with coming out, seems how the sex offenders were not going to come out. Out of these individuals, only three are under the age of 18. So the parole board makes the decision and they release them, they notify us, we go about making our contacts necessary and they go into court and the court schedules the reentry probation hearing. What is this impact and how do these kids work out? Let me explain that there's three different populations that we'll be looking at. The first population is the ones that are coming out and that's the non-707, 34 wards released back to the county from DJJ who have been there on an average of anywhere between two and five years. So they will be coming back in the next 11 months. This population is going to have a tremendous impact on us initially because all of a sudden now, boom, we have these people sitting in the county and we haven't got any probation officers ready to go or anything. They've released four, so it's coming. Recently, Mary Rayburn, who is going to be the division manager for adult services, because these are adult services we'll be looking into, recently spent a road trip and saw four different young people at four different facilities. Greg Powers, as soon as we get in position where we can transfer him from the gang unit to this particular unit, will be taking over as the deputy probation officer assigned to them. We want it to be a very limited number, two at the most, so that we can have control over these and not just spread them throughout all the caseloads. These wards, again, like I said, have been convicted of burglary, attempted robbery and all of those types of things. The probation department is going to have quite an interesting role. We have to go and interview the wards at DJJ, as I just described what Mary said. We're going to have to verify their residence. Do they have anybody to come home to? We'll prepare court reports because our judge has asked that a report be submitted to the juvenile court outlining what the expectation is for these individuals. Uh, I will mention that some counties are doing it on non-appearance calendars, so every county has their, their own way of doing it. At this point, the AOC has not ruled any particular way of dealing with this, so each county is left to come up with their own agreements between their courts. They'll evaluate the treatment needs, what are the issues surrounding this individual, assisted medical and mental health referrals, job training and completion of their education. And importantly, we'll be providing very close supervision. We anticipate these will be contacted at least two to three times a week to make sure that we know what they're doing. 90% of the wards, as I said before, are over the age of 18. If they commit a new law violation, um, they will be booked into custody and they will have adult hearings, at which time probation will be dismissed and it'll be handled through the adult courts. The second group is the current 17 young people that are on parole right now out of the Bakersfield office for non-707B offenses. They will continue to provide parole supervision for these individuals until they violate the law, at which time it's county probation's responsibility to deal with them. So, um, as with the other folks, if they're over 18 and they have a new law violation, they will be dealt with in the adult court system and probation will be dismissed. The last but not least group is those that we have not, that we have been sending to the youth authority all along, will no longer be going to DJJ. They will remain in the county and those are the non-707B classification. Those are the folks that are coming out now, that's the 34 that we had in the past that were there. We have reduced the population that we send to the youth authority dramatically over the last few years. This dramatic change is going to make the impact on us not near as dramatic as we had anticipated, uh, which to me is wonderful. We, we're calculating and we're doing it roughly at around 10 to 12, um, non-707 kids a year that are going to be going into it. And these are kids, these are minors under the age of 18 or we wouldn't have them for that. So these individuals, um, need to have someplace to go and need a secure environment, but it may not be that we have enough, but we're going to ask for a whole specialized units dealing with all of these problems. It may be that we'll be looking at an individual track for these people. They may be getting six to nine months in the juvenile hall and immersed with whatever their needs are at that time, then transferred to the boot camp and then graduated out to reentry. We're still in that curious stage as what to do. We have not had in the last month and a half, um, anyone referred to as for that from the courts. The courts have agreed that they would identify that had it not been for AB 81, that individual would have gone to the youth authority. So this gives us a good tracking thing for any financial issues that come up later like, well, how do you know you would have sent them? Now we will have this court order that goes with it. Um, funding, the important part. Tulare County will receive $260,455 from the 25 million that the state set aside for youthful offender block grant for the remainder of 2007, 2008 fiscal year to establish programs and services for non-707B offenders that currently do not exist. Um, at this point in time, we haven't done a really good needs assessment. We haven't looked at what the needs are and what the kinds of programs we need, but the one thing we do need at the very moment is that which we have asked for in this agenda item is to have adequate probation officers, of which we're only asking for two, and all of the paraphernalia that goes with that, in order to have an infrastructure to be able to start dealing with the original 34. Additionally, uh, excuse me, the state will also provide construction grants for design and construction of new or renovated county facilities for youthful offenders. The legislation is silent at the moment on the types of facilities and the specific populations to be served by those facilities. More information will be provided through the Corrections Standard Authority, who is the organization that will be monitoring all of the dollars coming into the county. I will say then, under the area of renovation, if there is an opportunity for a request, we have issues surrounding our security doors and locks in our juvenile detention facility that must be paid attention to, as well as our camera and security system. So it is possible that we will be putting through a request to CSA for funding for that matter. Additionally, we sent a letter to CSA requesting additional one-time funding for unforeseen circumstances associated with the implementation of SB 81. Tulare County had one of the highest rates of non-707B parolee returnees in the state of California. We had, uh, the startup money is just not going to allow us to utilize and do the kinds of things we need. Prole, make sure that every youngster has new clothes when they leave the facility. They make sure that they have bus passes, they make sure they have tuition to schools, they go into group homes, transitional homes and all of these kinds of things. They participate in special mental health programs and programs that when they told me we're going to send all these kids to group homes, I said, and who's paying for them? Um, that is why we are asking that startup money, because it does not allow us to deal with this, that we receive additional funding. We have asked for 135,000 additional dollars strictly for those kinds of issues if we need to have them. Potential future funding. Um, the bill calls for 100 million dollars to be shared throughout the county. Now, seems how we started at 25 million and got 260,000. If there's 100 million, one hopes that we will also equally triple our, our amounts. But the Department of Finance has declined at this point to give us any details. They did initially, which is interesting, and now they've backed off on that. So, you know, this is something that, um, could cause all of us concern as we go down the line and we need to hold our elected officials, to hold the governor responsible for that 100 million to the counties. The last part is an opportunity. Probation department really is trying to view this as a glass half full. For us, it's an opportunity to utilize our new ottoman system, our new assessment dot coms, in order to be able to provide evidence-based outcome reports and, and, and be able to identify what it is we do. This major shift in juvenile detention policy provides a unique opportunity for local probation departments to employ evidence-based outcome reports, utilizing a variety of resources. David Steinhardt, the Director of Commonwealth's Juvenile Justice Program, stated that those wards released under the old CYA system had extremely high rates of mental health disorders, approximately 70%, and substance abuse histories exceeding 80%. According to DJJ, 70% of the youth paroled from its prisons and camps were rearrested within two years. I have to believe in my heart of hearts that the probation department can do a better job and statistically we can show that they're in their own community. Uh, they have a lot to lose at this point if they don't do well. Arthur P., Arthur Peter Greenwood, RANZ, former Director of Criminal Justice and a national expert on juvenile justice policy, summarizes what works in the field of delinquency prevention, and that's evidence-based programs. Each day, more than 100,000 kids are involved in juvenile justice programs in California. About a third of these kids will straighten themselves out and never again see the insides of the court rooms or the jails. Another third are most likely to be in trouble with the law at least one more time. But the remaining third, about 30,000 at-risk kids in the state of California can turn their lives around if given evidence-based programs. These reforms can make that a reality, going from a system built on the basis of punishing kids to one whose foundation of evidence-based programs gives them a chance at a productive life and a far more than just a series of reforms. Accurately identifying high-risk individuals and developing appropriate case planning management is more effective in meeting the needs of our juvenile population. Developing and utilizing evidence-based programs is key in identifying specific issues that lead to delinquency and effectively intervening to change an offender's life course. With that, I'll open it up if you have any questions that I can try to answer.
Chairman, um, Sonia, thank you for your presentation. Um, I, I think you said that there was about 25 million dollars, of which we got about 260,000, so it represents about 1% of the total. My question is, how is this money divided up? I, I, what occurs to me is, one, we are the poorest, one of the poorest counties in the state. Second, we probably have one of the largest percentages because of our large child population. It would stand to reason we probably have a large percentage of the students, the wards being brought back into our county based upon the fact that so many of our, of our population are youthful. Uh, how do they come up with this 1%? How do we get 1% out of the total, which is about our population in general, but probably not comparable to our population when you look at ward, the ward age?
To the best of my ability to explain this, and it's not real good because the Department of Defense has a formula. And that formula is based not on how many go in or how many come out of the institution, but rather how many felony dispositional reports are prepared for the courts in this county. Then that is multiplied times the number of wards and then taken by. Then that is multiplied times the number of wards and then taken by the population. We, in all honesty, have about 75 percent of all of the court's activities involved in misdemeanors, unlike other counties. So, and that's a whole nother day's discussion, but approximately 600 is where we're looking at. We have funding similar though, you know, Stanislaus has, has issues. They have a certain number, it's not that much different from ours. They're basing it on strictly how many felonies. In some counties throughout the state, misdemeanors are not dealt with at all by probation departments. I have recently had to notify my local law enforcement agencies that misdemeanors will not be accepted into juvenile hall because we have no beds. That is becoming the predominant situation around the state, and I think that focusing in on those 600 will at some point in time move us to a position to make a greater impact.
Well, actually, that's, as you described it, that's encouraging to me. It's based upon real numbers, not just general population numbers and those kind of things.
No, it's real, solid numbers.
That tends to, to hurt rural counties and so on. That sounds pretty good.
And I think it does to the extent that we don't have the resources other counties have. So when we have utilized juvenile hall, when we've utilized the group homes, when we've utilized our, our youth facility, we're out of luck. And other counties have all kinds of different, you know, programs. LA County has, what, fourteen just camps alone, not counting all their other programs. So we don't have the same kind of resources in the valley. But hopefully, as we go along with this, we'll be able to develop some resources and some ways of dealing with young people differently than what we currently deal with them.
And my last comment really has to do with my other hat I wear as a, as a Commissioner on State Mandates, Unfunded Mandates, and that is-
I wrote that down here, actually.
Yeah, and that would be making sure that we're tracking these things to determine whether or not we do have an unfunded mandate issue here so that we would sort of get our claim on file with the state.
We will have our claim. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, the Department of Finance has already taken a position that this is an existing, not a new program, and so it is not an unfunded mandate. I do know that there are plans amongst the various counties to file a claim, but I think your board should be aware that any recovery is likely to only occur after litigation.
Well, that's one element, which is a new, a new program is another, but if there's a shift, if the state is shifting a cost burden to local government, that's another basis for a claim. So to the extent that the state of California, through its parole responsibilities and so forth, shifts this responsibility to the, to the local county, I believe that also would give, would be the basis for another.
I will say that they've taken the position that the money that we save by not sending those individuals to-
I realize that has to be accounted for.
Okay, so that is what they're saying is, you're not paying for it.
And maybe folks should understand that too. Unlike the, the general prison population, once a prisoner goes into the prison system, it is a state responsibility cost-wise. We know that with juveniles, when they go to the old CYA program, and I guess now the DJJ program, we are on the hook to pay for that. So there is, the fact that they come back to us as opposed to going is not a net, in fact, it's probably a savings, because I think their, their charges have gotten so high that we can probably do it cheaper here in our own county.
Right, and that's because they don't charge us for the gang enhancement kids. So anyone who has a gang enhancement on it, the state has not been charging for their incarceration. And you've seen that go down, so.
Jen, thank you. I mean, I certainly understand CYA had its share of problems, and I know that we don't want, we mentioned LA, we don't want, don't want to inherit their type of problems. And I appreciate the optimism, it's just there's, there's always that bud.
Always.
Because I, I'm probably, as I said, I wrote down here, is this another unfunded mandate, because I just worry about, I would certainly agree that we can do a better job locally. We have a better feel for the juveniles in this community has always been supportive of, of programs to, to help. But I was just wondering about the impact, if there's any impacts financially or service-wise with other departments. And I was also wondering about, you mentioned the construction grant, but then we would have to absorb the ongoing cost, any new programs. And so is there built into this grant, you know, is this number going to change? What if we're servicing, you know, seeing more youth? We establish programs? I just worry about-
It's a block grant, and as you know, block grants are just what they're said to be. They don't increase, there are no COLAs. Right now, it's only for three years, topping out in the year 2000, or yeah, 10. However, my guess would be that if all goes well from the state's perspective, they may not renew it. So this is something that we need to look at, because we can, you know, find more resources, we can, we can do all kinds of creative things with CBOs and a variety of things, but if it's only going to be funded for two years and these kids continue to need more, we have a problem. And that's why I said the glass is half full. I'm, I'm not optimistic enough to think that I'm going to get supported my entire period of time here with these young people.
Well, forgive me for not being trusting of the state, but they've never proven to be a good partner yet, so, all right.
A question. You stated that the cost of CYA was over $200,000. Did you make that statement, was it right out?
Oh, the cost of, our cost here for, for DJJ is oh, close to 435,000 a year, down from about a million four or five years ago, six years ago. So we will continue to send our serious criminals to DJJ. We want to, okay? It's that, that group. So we'll, we'll save, I don't exactly know how much, because we do utilize that 186.22 penal code, which is the gang enhancement, very well in this county for those that are going to DJJ. So our costs have been plummeting anyway. No, not 200,000, 400 and some.
Great. Phil?
Yeah, I've got a serious, you answered one of them, block grants only good until 2010, and then what, you know, what after that? You made another comment that, a couple of things, you said you notified the policing agencies that you no longer accept misdemeanors into juvenile hall. You probably don't know what they're doing with those youthful offenders as they're not coming through your front door, and I wonder what is happening.
They're coming through my back door. We're utilizing them with Thunderbolt, we're utilizing them with the neighborhood accountability programs. They're going through non-custody intake so they can be placed with a probation for supervision. They simply aren't just going to be able to book them and, and leave them. And this is if they're misdemeanors.
So instead of booking, I've, I've been in the car with it, so instead of booking them and leave them, they just sight and release?
They are going to have to deal with them. I would be, I have more than enough beds, I simply don't have enough staff.
Well, you just contradicted yourself, because you said the reason, you told them you wouldn't accept misdemeanor because we have no beds, you just said we have beds.
I should clarify myself.
How many beds are available? How many beds do you have?
Two hundred and ten.
And how many youthful offenders are in your facility right now?
Hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty, so there's-
And I'm down a third staff is the reason we can only do it at 130.
Okay, but there's eighty beds available, we just don't have staff to watch them. You know, and today, we're going to approve two probation officers. Are those probation officers in the pipeline, or how easy is it to get a probation officer? Does it take six months, does it take two months?
It'll take the replacement about four months to come in, but we will be transferring an experienced officer who has gang experience into that caseload.
Is that one officer coming from the magnet unit, or where's that one officer coming?
It's coming from the gang unit, not the magnet unit. I only have one gang magnet officer.
And so you have one magnet officer, then you have separate gang officers then?
Right, that are funded through the kind of gang task force.
And what, and you know, we have woodpeckers trying to do that here. One of the, one of the issues I have my eyes open up to, and I was somewhat familiar with here, a couple of weeks ago, I attended the Juvenile Justice Committee, which, which you were there, and we had a judge there talking about his caseload and his frustration with, with every petty crime that a juvenile could be charged with coming across his desk. The, the single punch at school, the, you know, the, the things of that nature, things that he didn't think needed to be there in front of his office, and it sounds like you're saying exactly the same thing. It seems to me like there needs to be some communications with the schools and the district attorney and all the players, instead of just saying the doors are closed, we're not going to take anymore, let's, let's relook at the way we're doing things, folks, and stop filing charges on every kid that gets frustrated, frustrated and takes a punch at school.
Well, let me clarify something. It is the probation department who's responsible for all misdemeanors that are submitted to the court through the Thunderbolt program. The Thunderbolt program was initiated to cooperate with police departments and work with them. We did that, and we probably can find some other ways of doing that successfully without necessitating court time, custody time, or other things. Sometimes they didn't appear for appointments and the police department asked us to submit it to the DA for filing. We'll work really hard at making sure those appointments are made, even if we have to go out to the house. So we are modifying that. I think in the meeting, I talked about that. That plan is well underway. That 75 percent was quite a shock to all of us.
Thank you.
You made a statement that concerned me, and that statement was about mental health, that many of these people are, are in need of mental health.
Coming from the DJJ, not necessarily ours.
Not the ones coming back to us.
Well, coming back to us from the state, state facilities, not our local facilities.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the impact it has upon our other agencies, is what concerns me.
Okay, and the first thing I need to let you know is there's a limited impact at this point in time on other agencies. Parole has, has utilized all of the services that this county has for parolees all along, so that, that won't particularly change. What the impact is, is you no longer have parole officers involved, you now have probation officers. So that's why the immediate infrastructure needed to make sure that we got the probation officers in there. As we go through these individuals and as we identify what needs are here, that we may have to go out and contract for an additional mental health worker, or an additional street mentor, who knows, you know? I mean, that's, that's the kind of thing that we're looking at, then by all means, we're going to do that.
Long as we keep track of what it's really costing us.
We will keep very good track.
Okay.
No, I think I was concerned about, what kind of results are we getting from our group homes in these communities? I mean, how many of these people are, you know, substance abuse and stuff? How many of these, these people are coming back and becoming offenders again? Are they, are we doing a good job there as far as with our group homes?
You know, I will be honest with you, I don't have any statistics available for, for about group home success, but I can tell you placement as a whole is not always the most successful route, because of the fact that anytime you take an individual out of their home where they're comfortable, no matter what the home is like, and you place them in foster homes, and they tend to move from place to place. I would say, as with anything, probably two-thirds of them do very well and a third of them do not. But I will get those statistics for you, Mr. Anis.
Chairman, I would, for discussion, I would move approval.
Second.
Motion is seconded. Please wait for the blinking light. Hey, we did a-
We're doing good.
It only took twice.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
A blond woman's over.
Hey, moving to item number seven, County Administrator's Office.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mike Spot, Assistant CAO. The matter before you was proposal to amend a property tax pass-through agreement entered into in 1989 between the county and the city of Tulare and the Tulare Redevelopment Agency. In essence, representatives from the city approached the county to inquire about possibly contributing towards redevelopment assistance in a project that is being contemplated in the Alpine area of the city of Tulare. In essence, a major manufacturer, Land and Lakes, is contemplating a expansion of its activities as well as the maintenance of a certain level of employment. Basically, the proposal is that Land and Lakes would invest approximately 55 to 80 million dollars in building improvements and dairy processing equipment. The limitation is that at least 35 million of that investment will go to the dairy processing equipment. Basically, what the city is asking is that the county contribute at least 50 percent of the tax increment, or the increase in the base value of property tax resulting from the investment made by Land and Lakes. So as a result of the investment, anywhere between 55 or 88 million dollars, whatever tax increment is generated, the county would contribute 50 percent of that. In terms of numbers, this would be a cap of 1.1 million dollars over a 15-year period. The county would be given the right to review the payment process each year pursuant to a certification by the city that Land and Lakes has made the improvements, the improvements are still there, and that the certain level of full-time equivalent employees are maintained, which would be 350. There are a number of safeguards built into the agreement, as I mentioned, there is a 1.1 million dollar cap, there is a fixed beginning and fixed ending to the agreement, the amendment, that is 2010 to 2024. If Land and Lakes defaults in that they remove the improvements, or if the FTEs fall below 350, 250 rather, then the county obligation ceases. In terms of the public benefits, Land and Lakes is a major property taxpayer in Tulare County. Their assessed valuation approximates 300 million dollars. They're also a major employer in Tulare County. We are told that as a result of the redevelopment assistance that will be made by both the city and its redevelopment agency and the county, this is a shot in the arm necessary for Land and Lakes in order to make this major monetary investment in Tulare County. That is a benefit, if you will, because it's consistent with our general plan as well as our strategic business plan to try to promote and expand economic opportunities. In terms of the specifics, we're asking you today to approve a notice of exemption pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act in that the expansion activities are essentially going to occur on the same site. They involve replacement of improvements, so there should be, not be any significant environmental impact. In addition, we request an amendment, which is in your packet, to the existing pass-through agreement that was entered into in 1989. I'd like to thank this time the other in-county council for their tremendous assistance with regard to helping in putting together these documents. I also know that representatives from the city of Tulare and Land and Lakes are in the audience, and I believe they would like to make some comments pursuant to your discretion. So if there are no questions, or if there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but if not, we would request approval of notice of exemption and the amendment to the pass-through agreement. Thank you.
Chairman, I just wanted to make a statement, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. This has no impact on the existing tax base that the county now receives. It would only be the additional improvements that are made by the entity. And then of that, those improvements, those increase, that increases assessments, one half of that, basically, we still would receive, the other half would be going back to the property owner, I suppose. So, so that it's no, there's no loss of revenue, there's actually a gain of revenue for the county, it's just that we would get, instead of 100 percent of that, what we'd normally get, we'd get 50 percent of that. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. That is a, a correct statement of how the agreement would work. The base assessed valuation right now is about 53 million dollars. That base is going to be retained. That is the benchmark from which the tax increment is going to be measured in this agreement. So if Land and Make, Land and Lakes makes a 50 million dollar investment, 60 million, 70 million, the base property tax is still retained by the county. Now, according to our pass-through agreement that was entered into in 1989, we get 100 percent of the pass-through. That doesn't happen anymore. So what we are basically doing is reducing by 50 percent the increase in the base resulting from the investment made by Land and Lakes.
And I, and I just want to say, I see that as being very positive for the county, because it's increased revenue, I don't see increased expenses that go along with it to the county. In other words, this is in the city of Tulare, they provide the fire protection, the police protection. It's, it's, it's hard for me to imagine in that situation where this is nothing but really a, a benefit to the county in terms of increased revenue, and it's hard for me to imagine how it would be increased expenses that go along with it. If there is some, I don't know what it would be.
That is correct.
Very indirect.
And in 2024, the pass-through agreement would cease, and so- And in 2024, the pass-through agreement would cease, and so then there's no longer a contribution to the city of Tulare. Whatever is left, 100% goes to the county.
When it comes back in 2024, Supervisor, you may have the opportunity to vote again on through that. And I, you know, as we had conversation, as we had conversation yesterday, I'm glad you attempted to do that explanation rather than listen to mine. But having sat in on this from the beginning when the ask was made, it just makes sense every way you look at it, preserving jobs, increasing, you know, revenues for all of us. And as you mentioned, it's not taking away something we already have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pyle, do you want to speak to this matter?
Do you want to talk, or you just want to listen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good morning. My name is Darrell Pyle. I'm the city manager for the city of Tulare, 411 East Kern Avenue, Tulare, California, 93274. Recent actions taken by the Tulare City Council and the Tulare Redevelopment Agency regarding an investment in Land O' Lakes and their plant in Tulare resulted in a sales tax sharing agreement for the sales tax to be paid by Land O' Lakes on what could be $40 to $50 million worth of equipment. The city of Tulare has agreed to return a little over 67% of that sales tax paid as a proportionate investment in that multimillion dollar investment in the plant. The redevelopment agency has taken action to share 90% of the redevelopment agency tax increment gained from the investment in the plant, excluding the 20% low and moderate set aside. So, the city of Tulare has recognized the benefits provided by the Land O' Lakes operation, and this request came as a result of several Land O' Lakes plants vying for that particular investment. All the plant managers across the United States would love to have that investment made in their plant, and this was done in an effort to provide the highest rate of return available and make sure that that comes from the city of Tulare's Land O' Lakes facility. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But we do have some representatives from Land O' Lakes here in the audience as well. Thank you.
Hi, Board. I'm James Gomachak with Incentus Group, and we are representing, oh, thank you, Land O' Lakes from a financial perspective in terms of evaluating this investment in the plant here. Thank you for your consideration. I can tell you that the counties, the cities, and the redevelopment agencies' commitment to this project is an important factor in determining where this investment took place. There was a competition between various plants throughout the country, and this played a huge role in the board of Land O' Lakes, the decision to invest the money here in Tulare County, in the city of Tulare. One question we do have, the $1.1 million cap in the current amendment is based on the low to mid-range of the investment amount. If the investment were to come in at the high range, the company would like to request that cap be increased to $1.4 million. And that would only obviously happen if Land O' Lakes went above the low or mid-range of their current investment range. And that is a request the company would like to make. I'm not sure if it can be amended within this agreement here or not. Question for Michael, I guess.
Quick question, Mr. Chair. Is that the city of Tulare's agreement? That it's the 90% based on the assessed value?
Correct. There is no cap on the redevelopment agencies' agreement or a cap on the sales tax. It'll be a percentage of whatever that total investment is. From our perspective, we'd love the investment to be high. From Land O' Lakes' perspective, they'd love the investment to be economical. So, but no caps on our agreements.
Thank you.
Chairman, I was most curious if Mike had any comment on that, whether this was contemplated in their discussions, or this is something that just hadn't been thought about.
Yeah, because it's not in front of us, is it?
This is a, this item was a product of negotiation. When the deal points were originally developed a few months ago, we agreed on a $53 million base and a cap of $1.1 million. As a result of iterations or sensitivity analysis of what the investment would be and what the assessed valuation would be, this is the latest that has come up. But in order to protect the county, we wanted to put a cap in there. Now, the amendment, the agreement could be amended sometime in the future because the $1.4 million would not be projected to be paid until 10, 11, 12, 15 years from now. So, I believe there would be enough opportunity, if it looked like that the investment would come in higher, that maybe we can amend the agreement. But this was a deal point that was disclosed very clearly and held very firmly all the way through the negotiations. It's within your discretion, but this is how we walked into the agreement with our eyes open.
Question, you said "we," the negotiations that we made, "we" being who?
The "we," the county.
The county, so negotiations weren't made between you, city, Land O' Lakes, negotiations were internal?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chairman, and I have a question. So, are you saying that the $1.1 million cap is, you know, that, I know you would like it to be more, but if we say that it isn't with the opportunity to, you know, renegotiate going forward, are you saying that's a deal breaker for you?
No, I think the opportunity to renegotiate a later date is a good option because within the next couple of years, we'll know where that investment's going to come in at. There's a lot of fluctuations in steel prices and currency exchange that the company cannot really put a good number down right now on the number of investments, so.
I think with that point made, we can't put a good number on it either. So, that leaves us open for the negotiations down the road.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have a question, Chairman. Since you're the Land O' Lakes folks, right, does this increase, I mean, I'm assuming the viability of the plant, but does it also increase its capacity?
The capacity for processing milk. It actually, it kind of redefines the ability to process different kinds of dairy products. We're really looking at a competitive environment for exports and different technology to produce butter in different ways. It doesn't necessarily increase the capacity of milk for this particular project. Those projects are always going on. We're always trying to figure out ways to process more milk. But as Darrell said, we are in competition. In Land O' Lakes alone, we've got seven different business units we're competing for capital. And in our business unit alone, we're competing with nine or 10 other plants and marketing agreements in common, joint venture opportunities, co-packing opportunities. So, this particular investment is really what Tulare needs to be competitive going forward in export markets, in expansion of core products, and that kind of thing.
Very good. But also, if you're thinking about another way of churning butter, if you just drive along some of the roads in Conny's district, you could accomplish that quite well.
Skim it right off the top.
In the tanker.
Yeah, it's churned, it churned before it gets to the plant. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Skim it off the top.
Thank you. Okay, I want to bring it back to the board.
We'll fix that.
Do you have any questions?
No. No other questions. Whatever.
No questions. I would have supported the request, but it sounds like the rest of the board is, it's not really, it wouldn't really cost us anything to put that in there to agree because all we're agreeing to is the 50%. The 50% is the cap, in my opinion, but, yeah.
Well, there is another dollar cap, but the idea would be, that was based upon the low number.
I realize.
I think the idea that we leave.
I'll support the rest of the board, but I could have gone along with the 50% as the cap.
Well, in that case, just move for approval as is in front of us, Mr. Chairman.
A motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded. And we'll wait for the flashing light.
Light's on this side.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. We're going to take item number eight.
I'm Lynn Gregory with the County Administrative Office. And the clerk is passing out some documents to you for this presentation. Here today to provide you with a status on community choice aggregation. You'll recall that the last time we got together, or we discussed this, we were seeking approval to execute Program Agreement One. A total of 13 municipalities did approve that. Only nine were required, so that's moving it forward. There are 11 cities and two counties, of which Tulare County is now the largest member as the city of Fresno was the only original member that chose not to continue to participate in the program. What we are working on right now to move forward are various agreements. The first is a power services agreement between Kings River Conservation District and the San Joaquin Valley Power Authority. It was distributed to all the membership for review, and it was approved yesterday during the Power Authority Board of Directors meeting. Now, they are working, they continue to work on the energy services agreement, and KRCD and Citigroup are working to negotiate what the cost of that power will be. The goal is to have that final form completed near the end of October. Also, there are service agreements with the investor-owned utilities to define the services that they will provide for community choice aggregation program. You'll recall that they will be responsible to continue the billing. It will be seamless to the consumer, that they will still receive the bill from SCE and/or PG&E, whichever service area they're in. The agreement, along with the evidence of insurance, is scheduled to be submitted to the California Public Utilities Commission prior to the program's startup. There may also be some specialized agreements that will be required for specialized services with the IOUs or the investor-owned utilities, and those will be worked on as any issues arise. The Sempra agreement, Sempra is responsible to provide data management to the Power Authority to keep track of customer data and that sort of thing. That has been executed between KRCD and Sempra, and they're going to be meeting to discuss the schedule and implementation of the data management responsibilities. You'll recall that KRCD was working on some local generation projects that might help, that might be beneficial to the community choice aggregation program, the largest of which that has been discussed, well, actually, there are two. The first was the Community Power Plant in the Parleyer area. They have filed on September 27th, KRCD did file an application for certification of the proposed Community Power Plant with the California Energy Commission. It starts a 15-month permitting process for the proposed plans, and once the process is complete, the Power Authority can then determine if they want to continue to purchase energy, or if they would like to purchase energy from that power plant to, for the program. There will be a 60-day, 60 to 90-day review of the data and, by the Energy Commission, and then they'll hold their first public hearing in the Parleyer area in early 2008. Also, they were working on the Clean Tech solar farm. KRCD and Clean Tech continue to work under an MOU agreement to develop an 80-megawatt solar farm in the valley. Current activities include the site selection, development of projects scheduled through 2011, and a first draft completed of the power purchase agreement. And also, they're exploring small hydro projects. They're currently in discussions with Orange Cove Irrigation District and the Friant Power Authority on some small hydro projects. Where are we today? Like I said yesterday, they did hold a meeting at the Power Authority, and they did approve the power services agreement. They have started to do telephone and radio commercials, and what the commercials are intended to do is just start to familiarize the consumer with community choice aggregation, make them a little more aware of the program, and then eventually, this is not the end-all communication. There will be further communication with them. Those commercials are in English and in Spanish, and I have one for you, so I'm going to go ahead and play it for you right now.
A partnership of all local cities and counties, working for reliable energy, lower costs and local control. It's our energy, our power, our community, our future. Community Choice, a partnership for reliable energy. It's your choice, your voice, our future. Next is a Spanish version. Community Choice, un programa de energía para nuestra región. Una asociación con nuestras ciudades y con dados locales. Trabajando hacia energía segura. Cojos bajos y control local. Es nuestra energía, nuestro poder, nuestra comunidad, nuestro futuro. Community Choice es nuestra asociación para energía segura. Es su elección, su voz, nuestro futuro. And then the last thing I'm going to have you listen to is. Community Choice, an energy program for our region. A partnership of all local cities and counties, working for reliable energy, lower costs and local control. It's our energy, our power, our community, our future. Community Choice offers powerful energy benefits to businesses and residents of our region. By choosing to participate, you can enjoy a reduction in your power bill and local control over energy decisions. Eleven local cities and two counties in the Semper family have joined together to offer these powerful benefits to you. All energy customers in participating cities and counties will receive notices in the mail and in the energy bills as Community Choice is phased in. For more information about your opportunity to participate, go to communitychoice.info. Community Choice, a partnership for reliable energy. It's your choice, your voice, our future.
As I said, this is just the beginning, just to introduce them to the program. They will receive further information, and there is a committee assigned solely for the purpose of communicating to the consumer what Community Choice is and how the program will work, that they will automatically be enrolled in the program, and they must opt out of the program. KRCD has committed to provide monthly status reports to Power Authority members on current activities, of which I've just provided you with those documents. That is the September, or October, report. And the website is up to date with the most current information on the program itself, so that way the consumer can visit, or anybody can visit for that matter, to see what the program is about. And also, I have Dave Wirth here, and he's going to talk to you a little bit further about the program.
Okay. Good morning, members of the board, Chairman Ashida, and Gene. Welcome to the new job. I was asked by the chair and the new CAO to provide you with a quick status of some of the things that are going on. In the course of communication, I realized that we've expected a lot out of Tulare County. Frankly, we've been working with each of the other members for several years, and as we've stated to you before, kind of in a joint decision, we fast-tracked Tulare County to this position. I've perhaps been a little bit negligent in coming back and trying to communicate with you to get you up to speed, and for that I apologize. As we move forward, I think as Lynn pointed out, our objective is to really do our best in communicating with each of the authority members on the status of activities and some of the events that are going on because there are just a lot of information, a lot of things to try to get our arms around. What I want to do here is give you a quick status report. I'll not repeat the things that Lynn has provided and then address three concerns that were raised in my communications with the chair and Gene. We are moving forward. The implementation plan that was required by the Public Utilities Commission was originally filed in January and certified after 90 days of review. It was refiled this past August to reflect the inclusion of Tulare County and the exclusion of the city of Fresno as membership, in the final membership of the authority. We also adjusted load numbers and budget numbers and submitted that to the PUC, which they promptly recertified. In addition to the power services agreement that was approved yesterday, and that agreement, it's important to recognize that is the agreement between the authority and KRCD that defines the roles and responsibilities that KRCD has, the obligations that we have in representing the authority as your agent. I was really into trying to define very clearly what representation we can do on your behalf as we move forward, we KRCD. your behalf as we move forward, we KRCD, and then set forth mechanisms for repayment of costs in the future. We additionally adopted an initial budget, a preliminary rate schedule for 2008 based on the estimated utility rate schedules and a rate-setting policy, all aimed at trying to give the members and ultimately the customers some additional information and assurances that our objectives of initial discount and price stability will be met or we won't proceed. Finally, the Authority Board yesterday issued a commencement notice, passed a resolution authorizing the issuance of a commencement notice. That is a provision that was set forth in program agreement number one, of which your county is a member, that is the agreement among each of the authority members that defined that you were going to let the authority act on your behalf for moving Community Choice forward. That commencement notice is highly conditioned. It says essentially that number one, KRCD needs to approve the power services agreement. My board has not yet received or reviewed or taken action on that agreement. And secondly, and more importantly, from your perspective, the executive committee of the Power Authority Board needs to make a finding that the economic objectives of the program, starting with the 5% discount and rate schedule, can be met before the program goes live. There were some questions about off-ramp and obligations and I want to try to simplify this. In the Joint Powers Agreement and the program agreement, there is a provision that allows members to terminate upon six months' notice. Legally, the obligations that exist for you as a member at the effective date of withdrawal, which would be six months later, become obligations that you would have to pay for. Practically, because the power services agreement doesn't allow for any cost recovery from any member or any customer until the discount is provided, practically those obligations are in effect frozen at your time of notice. And I want to make that clear. If there's some reason for a member to decide that they want out, making that notice today would eliminate any obligation that you would have for future program costs because under the terms of the PSA, KRCD, the Power Services Agreement, KRCD is obligated to continue to fund those costs and not allowed to recover until the discount is met to the satisfaction of the board. Opportunities and risks. The opportunities are, these are straight out of the staff report that you received several months ago, your annual savings in the first year. When we achieve that 5% discount is $92,000 to your own accounts. A typical resident would save about $60 a year. Medium commercial estimated average was about $1,700 a year and then a large commercial would see about an $8,000 discount in the first year. Now those are, those are very approximate numbers based on average load for that customer class, but the 5% discount again is a solid number. It's 5% or we don't go forward. This chart shows, again, I think it was provided to you previously, the annual savings to all electrical accounts within Tulare County. Given your size, you do represent about 40% of the overall program load. There's an opportunity for nearly $10 million of reduced energy costs to your customers in year one when that 5% discount is achieved. Risks. There are two forms of risks that every member should be concerned about. We've spent a lot of time evaluating those risks. We had some independent peer review come in and look and agree that yes, these are significant risks. Two risks that you need to be concerned about, one is the regulatory risk. The fact that, that the Public Utilities Commission and the state legislature continue to make changes to the way energy is priced and the way energy is supposed to be delivered in this state. Things like potential increase in renewable portfolio standards ultimately result in higher costs to the customers because renewables cost more. The solar energy initiative, there are things that we need to keep our eyes on. More mundane are the rate case, rate-making cases and applications that are filed by the utility, each of the utilities with the Public Utilities Commission. We have already engaged through KRCD and some of our consultants in front of the Public Utility Commission on rate-making proposals. We've just recently successfully asked the administrative law judge at the Public Utility Commission to rule in our favor regarding a proposed cost shifting from generation to distribution proposed by Southern California Edison and felt that that was a, there was a better venue for that activity to take place than in the proceeding that was in front of the ALJ. The point there is that there are things that are going on that we have represented from day one. This authority, this group of local governments can have a direct voice in and we've already engaged those in front of the Public Utility Commission. Financial risks, there are a number of them, but for the short term, it's important to remember that for the next eight years, this is a fixed-price contract with a full requirements energy supplier, presently Citigroup and Citigroup Energy. And the direction that I've received under the public, or the power services agreement is to enter into that contract and bring it, or to negotiate that contract and then bring it back to the Power Authority to make a determination whether or not in fact it allows the 5% discount and the 2% cap on energy prices over the next eight years. So your fundamental risk for the next eight years is what you think the energy market is going to do. We're going to discount at 5% and then we're going to increase the rates at that discount at a cost of 2% a year for the next eight years. If for some reason, we don't believe this, I don't think there are forecasts that generally support this, that for the next eight years, the utilities see declining rates or rates that are 2% or 1% increase on average, then the financial risk becomes that customers can look back, aggregated customers can look back at the bundled service being provided by the utilities and conclude that hey, I can get a cheaper deal there and then they can migrate back. I put this chart together to kind of help you understand the sensitivity of that. This chart shows that in year one, 2008, this is just an assumed $100 a month service for generation to a residential customer. That's a pretty healthy residential customer. Generation rates vary based, as you know, based on size and based on your total usage.
You find $100?
But, pardon?
Where do you find $100?
Yeah. But the, this is the $100 generation component, just as an example so that you can do your own multiplication. The program is hardwired to provide a $95 rate to that customer in year one or it will not move forward. Assuming that we hit that target, then the first column, the authority rate, is fixed at a 2% rate per year increase. It's interesting to note that in a 2%, 3%, 4%, or 5% average annual increase in generation, which are the columns to the right, our authority rate is always competitive with what the utilities would be billing for generation under that scenario. It's only in the 1% market, which again, even the utilities have suggested that their rates are going to be at or around 1% to 2%, that we find ourselves going in effect underwater or upside down in 2014 and 2015. At that point, it's reasonable to assume that customers may very well look back and see different rates on the other side of the fence and start to choose to migrate away. If they do so, there would be exit fees from the authority charged against that customer, representing the differential between the cost that we would be incurring on their behalf, the $106.99 in 2014 versus the $106.15 that presumably that power was worth in the marketplace. So there would be an incremental exit fee that we would propose to collect. We are currently working with utilities to try to collect that over time, just like they collect their exit fees over time when customers leave their bundled service and return or, and go to aggregation or direct access service. Just a couple of final slides here. It's important to recognize how your load mix falls out. You are predominantly Southern California Edison. Only less than 20% of your load is served by PG&E. This gives you kind of a customer mix. Again, 40% of the total program, about 1.200 annual gigawatt hours of electricity broken down across 66,000 customers in those classes. Let me just close with saying, happy to answer any questions that you have. We still see a great opportunity here and a great deal of interest amongst the communities that we're working with on the Power Authority. Again, the long-term vision, as Lynn pointed out to you, is to make investments locally in generation capacity. We think the region needs that capacity. That continues to be a concern of the California Independent System Operator and while this initially is focused on a fixed-price schedule with Citigroup Energy, presuming that we can come to terms with them, long-term vision here is making investments in capacity. And that's why KRCD, no obligation to the authority at this point, is pursuing the baseload plant in Parlayera and the permitting process and we're looking at these other renewable projects, so.
Thank you. Russo?
Thank you. Thank you, Dave, for coming today. The chairman and I talked about our desire, the chair's desire to bring this matter back to, to this board, to discuss and to discuss some of the obligations and risks that we are, we will participate in. And I'm glad you came in to clarify that somewhat. I do have a couple of questions though, and a comment and I'll say my comment first. You know, I've been on board for a little bit over a month and I've struggled with this issue somewhat. It is a fairly complex project that we are participating in and I think we all want more competition in the energy market and other markets that are controlled by one or two companies. And so I've struggled to get up to speed with this and provide so much information to this board and so I appreciate you coming today and helping explain some of those risks to me and the board. I do have a couple of questions though, and that is, what is the county obligated as of today, based on the vote that took place yesterday with the, what is it, the power service agreement?
Yeah, the power services agreement that was approved yesterday created no additional obligation to you in this sense. It provides in Article 9 that no obligations can be collected until the 5% discount is achieved. If the 5% discount is achieved, under that agreement, KRCD is authorized in consultation with the Board of Directors to begin an amortized recovery of the costs that we have incurred up to that point in time. And the agreement provides for both development costs, which we estimate are approximately $2 million, and an additional startup cost obligation, which based on the budget that was approved yesterday, runs around $3.5 million. That is inclusive of fees that we have to pay to Sempra to do data management, fees we have to pay the utilities to do our billing and collection, fees for the regulatory representation. But those two numbers combined, $6 million. 40% of that becomes a potential obligation of the customers within Tulare County and that would be recovered through the, through the power sales. There are several provisions in the power program, power services agreement, excuse me, that provides or states the intent of the board to recover those costs solely through power sales. So those become obligations that are amortized as part of the power delivery over time and recovered from customers. So your obligation as of yesterday remained, or as of today, remains contingent upon achievement of the discount. And once the discount is achieved to the satisfaction of the board, then there are program costs that are recovered through power, through power sales.
So you are saying as of today, after the action of the board yesterday, that Tulare County and its users have not incurred any liability as to the startup costs of this whole process?
I am saying that, yes, that your liability begins at the time that the board in the future agrees that we have provided a power source, the power supply at a 5% that allows them to set rates at a 5% discount. At that point in time, your obligations will begin, but not until then.
Okay, what if we opted out today?
You opt out today, there's a provision in the Joint Powers Agreement and program agreement number one, that if you make that decision, a six-month clock starts ticking. So your effective date of withdrawal would be six months from today. Logically, we would not go out and incur a bunch of power purchase costs for you. So my point was from a practical application, I don't believe, while the agreements do allow for recovery of costs, there won't be any costs incurred for you because you will have put us on notice prior to the commencement of those costs that you don't choose to participate.
Okay, so the previous amounts of money that have been spent on this project would not be, 40% would not be charged?
No, sir, absolutely not. No, this is a risk that my board recognizes and understands that the whole recovery of costs that we've incurred to date are contingent upon future power sales.
Okay, what if we withdraw and you still go through the contract and you, and you're able to get the 5% discount, but we've withdrawn? Are we now bound to the startup costs?
I do not believe so. Now again, counsel may review that and I had a conversation with our counsel this morning about that very question. I don't believe that the language says that. I don't believe that we would have any intent of going back to Tulare County or Fresno, City of Fresno for that matter, who withdrew after they were a party for a while, and seek to recover costs. I don't think the agreement allows that. If there's any ambiguity, we certainly wouldn't try to take advantage of it.
Well, the difference is, if Fresno County withdrew before your meeting yesterday...
That's correct, but the, in my opinion, the power services agreement that we executed yesterday did not create any additional obligation for you unless and until we deliver cheaper power.
Counsel?
One point you might want to clarify, Dave, is the executive committee is negotiating that, right? The executive group?
Yeah, the, okay, good, I said the board, didn't I? The resolution that the Power Authority Board passed yesterday delegated the decision to determine that the 5% discount has in fact been met to the executive committee. So at a future date, again, Lynn pointed out that she, she represented that our current target is by the end of October, we would hope to be able to present to the executive committee of the Power Authority Board, a fully negotiated contract with Citigroup Energy that has prices in it that when combined with the budget that was approved yesterday, allow the board to set the rates at the 5% discount. If the executive committee concludes that that hasn't been met, then we don't move forward. If they do conclude that it's been met, then an obligation begins.
And the noticing period, one last question, the noticing period on that, on that committee is kind of, bless you, is fairly short due to the circumstances and the negotiations and what have you.
Yeah, well, the executive committee is subject to Brown Act and as your board is aware, Brown Act allows for a special meeting to be noticed in 24 hours, a regular meeting in 72 hours. It's important to recognize however, that that won't be the first bite. What will happen prior to that is that the KRCD board will have to review and consider whether or not that's an agreement that needs to be offered, that's ready to be offered up to the, the Power Authority. So the KRCD board will, will first notice and review that meeting before we notice and review the agreement with the executive committee. So there will be a period of public review allowed.
May I ask a few questions? Had some of these documents only since Friday afternoon, so it's entirely possible that there are nuances that we haven't quite grasped. They're quite lengthy, but a couple of questions for you. And I think it's important for the board to understand, there's KRCD and then there's the Joint Powers Authority. KRCD is looking at some point to recover its costs from the Joint Power Authority if certain conditions are met. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And a pro-rata share of those costs would be, for Tulare County would be 40% given the makeup at this point in time?
Yes, 40% based on assumed broad, the customer load that you would bring to the, it's not the county's obligation, it's the customers... it's not the county's obligation, it's the customers' within the county's obligation.
All right. The new agreement, the one that was adopted yesterday, the Power Services Agreement, we thought said that members would be responsible to KRCD, both for their share of net unavoidable costs for power procurement and any debt service. Is that correct?
That is, yes, that is correct. That is a provision in, I forget which article it is in the agreement, but it is a provision that's based on, that assumes that we've begun the delivery of power at the 5% discount, that the Board has made subsequent decisions for debt service and the incorporation of the recovery of that cost within the rate structure. Any termination fees that may exist, those become obligations of the members, yes. All contingent upon the 5% discount of power.
All right, and your projected budget for next fiscal year shows the Authority having a deficit of $1.8 million?
Yes.
Is that going to be addressed by financing?
That is going to be addressed through an advance of reserves from KRCD, which are supported by a KRCD commercial paper issuance. The implementation plan from day one contemplated negative cash flows for the first several years, as we incurred upfront startup costs and saw customers phase in over time.
I guess what I'm getting at is, either through the Joint Powers Authority or through KRCD, the County of Tulare, if it were to decide to withdraw in the future, would have prorata costs assessed to it for the issuance of the debt service that KRCD is planning to undergo, as well as any debt undertaken by the Authority. Is that correct?
I believe so, if I understand the question, yes.
The other, your goal, of course, is to recover those costs through the rate payments from consumers, correct? So if the enterprise is successful, there is no obligation. Is that correct?
Right.
I'm wanting, I'm sorry if I'm sounding simplistic.
That's correct.
The other question I had for you in regard to risk is that, in prior conversations I had with your counsel, is it the same counsel?
Yes, yes.
There was discussion regarding incorporating into the rate insurance against certain risks, one of which is the withdrawal, the so-called responsibility for reentry fees if the entity were to withdraw. And as of, I think as of August, and this may have changed, because I know you mentioned you just did a new, filed a new implementation plan, but the version that we had says that the Authority is going to self-insure for reentry fees?
The, that has been updated. There is a requirement by the Public Utility Commission, the cost of reentry, these would be costs that the utilities would incur to take customers back on an involuntary termination, where the county has decided that they no longer want to be a member after you've begun aggregated service. Your customers involuntarily would be removed from aggregation and sent back to utilities. Public Utility Commission rule requires that we bond or self-insure that obligation. We're negotiating the level of bonding that's required through the Public Utility Commission's Energy Division. Interestingly, we have a pretty big gap between what we think the obligation should be, based on precedents for other types of customers, and what the utilities are now asking for. So we're negotiating that, but ultimately, as part of the registration packet that we will have to file with the Utility Commission, we will have to demonstrate that we've satisfactorily met that requirement. And it will come in some type of an insurance or a posted bond, at whatever levels the PUC ultimately decides we have to post.
I raise that, because I've previously represented to several members of your Board that in my conversation with counsel for the Authority, there was going to be an insurance against this risk. And then I was a little concerned when I saw self-insurance, which is as good as self-insurance is, it's either, it can be great, or it can be not so great. So that was one of the reasons I wanted to bring it up for your Board also, because that is a risk that your Board would assume in the event that you decided to terminate after the enterprise was up and running. And I see that there's a very substantial disagreement between the Authority and the utilities as to what that reentry or service termination, I'm not even sure what it's called, this fee, would be. Apparently, you have a much lower estimate. That would be the reason for the negotiations, I assume.
That's, and actually, we've had, we've asked the Public Utility Commission to assist us in resolving that dispute. If the Board would like, I can get into the details of that, but it might be a diversion.
I think it's just important for the Board to note that that's an additional risk that your Board assumes by going forward, but it appears that there is going to be some form of transfer of that risk, for that particular risk, there's going to be a transfer to some vehicle, whether it's self-insurance, or a bond, or something else. Thank you.
Any other questions by Board members? This was basically an information item. Thank you for your update, and the only clarification I have is that you're looking at possibly entering into a contract which would bind us by the end of this month. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't, let me qualify that. I think I said that, let me clarify, not qualify, clarify what I said, so that there's a good understanding. I believe that by the end of this month, we will have an agreement with Citigroup Energy ready for public review. And that public review then will require initially that it goes to my Board, which time, obviously, the utilities and other members of the public and the members will start to have an opportunity to review. What's my Board, gives me the okay, I will present that to the, our Authority Executive Committee, for determination whether or not the discount has been met. Practically speaking, it's going to be mid-November. My target of the end of this month is to have the final draft of the agreement ready to start going through the authorization processes, so...
And that authorization process would be the presentation to the parties involved in the aggregation for their view?
The Energy Services Agreement that we're talking about with Citigroup is a KRCD-Citigroup Agreement. The Executive Committee of the Power Authority Board has a duty now, based on Authority Board action yesterday, to review that agreement, to make a determination that it meets the financial objectives of the program and provides the 5% discount. If, in the course of the distribution of that agreement for public review, certainly the Authority, each of the Authority members will have an opportunity to review it and provide comments on it. I respond in this way, there is not a formal requirement for the members individually, Tulare County in this case, to review and approve the Energy Services Agreement between KRCD and Citigroup. The requirement, which you've, in essence, delegated, is to the Executive Committee of the Power Authority Board.
Mr. Chairman, if I can clarify, KRCD has indicated its willingness to the JPA to assume liability essentially for the financing, the startup costs of this project. And you say something would bind Tulare County. The agreement is between the Joint Powers Authority and KRCD, and the cost to Tulare County would come from a withdrawal of the process in the future. If you stay in the Authority, presumably, the costs are paid by the rate payers.
Well, that is the issue, with either you stay or you withdraw.
I understand that, but I just wanted to clarify that the agreement will bind KRCD, there then is an agreement between KRCD and the Authority, which is already in effect, which says if certain things happen, certain obligations are met thereafter, let's say mid-November, obligations are going to be incurred, which the Authority would be responsible for, and if you were to withdraw after that time, you would be prorata responsible for. Did I state that correctly?
Yes.
Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions? Discussing?
There is mud.
I appreciate the presentation today, because I believe that the residents of Tulare County need to know that what the process that we're undertaking to look at an alternative power source, and the liabilities that go along with the decision to join an alternative power source.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know about the rest of the Board. I can only speak to receiving a letter from the Farm Bureau, but I haven't had any contact from anybody else with questions or concerns, so I don't know how aware anybody is.
That's why it was on the agenda today. Moving to Board of Supervisor matters.
We need to accept that report, Mr. Chair. We need to accept that report by motion.
There's no need for any...
No action, I just... I don't see any action. Okay, Supervisor Ennis?
Well, we've got some pretty important meetings coming up to, we've got the Success Dam meeting coming up on the 19th in Sacramento, so we'll know which direction we're going to go with the dam. Got a gang meeting on the 24th in Porterville with nonprofits, churches, law enforcement, both city and county, and looking forward to that meeting, and probably get as many people on board as we possibly can to come to solutions of how to combat gangs. And then on the 29th, Chairman Ashida and I will be attending a meeting in Porterville on the Porterville Courthouse, and being brought up to date on how that's coming and where we are. So those are some things coming up in my part of the county. Thank you.
Sunday, day which would go down in infamy, no, the Governor signed the Shados Bill, and I, for the life of me, I can't remember, I think it was 1731 or something like that, but I always think of it as SV 999, because that's what it was for several years prior to that, which will expand the size of the San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control Governing Board from 11 to 15, adding two additional city members. There will now be three cities of 100,000 or more, two cities below 100,000, before it was three different categories, one of each, and they have to be spread across the spectrum of the air board district. And then two appointees from the Governor's Office, one being a doctor, medical doctor, another being a specialist in air quality matters. You know, as a member of the Board, and I have been representing this Board and on that Board for some years now, it's an interesting exercise that does nothing to improve air quality. And it's amazing how much effort, energy has been made in trying to foist this matter on the air board and fighting it, and yet, you know, I will declare victory and move on, and hope for the best in terms of the new members that we will have to work with on this Board. But frankly, I don't believe, I don't see this will do anything really to improve our air quality any faster. If anything, it may make it more difficult, just because if you have people with varying agendas that come on the Board, it's just going to, it can be a disruptive influence. But I'm going to hope for the best, and hope that the city will send us good representatives, that the Governor will make good appointees, and that from that will come a cohesive group that will continue to service the district and improve our air quality. So it was an unfortunate, I think unnecessary thing, but, you know, it's here, and so we will move on.
I have a question. I know that currently, the city appointments are made by the League of Cities.
Still will be.
Okay, so then, through manipulation by a certain unnamed senator, the large cities were already included, so...
Actually, the manipulation that you're referring to was that the process that was normally followed by the League of Cities was a very non-controversial approach, where the executive board made nominations, people showed up at the next meeting, said yea to the nomination.
But it was shared, I mean, each year you had to go from one...
And it still is. I mean, the point is, these are, these are appointments, these are, I think they're like three-year terms, I believe, and it will be, they are spread, so you have three cities over 100,000, which means that Visalia will have an opportunity to be one of those cities, because we now have, there'll be Bakersfield, Visalia, Fresno, Modesto, and Stockton, are the five cities over 100,000, with Clovis probably not far behind. And then you'll have two, which will be the smallest, under 100,000.
But the League will make those cities...
The League will still make those decisions. One of the questions is, will the League start from scratch in terms of this statute, or will they simply deal with the three additional, the two additional new members? That'll be up to the League, that's their choices. But I believe that the League, in some conversations that you and I have been aware of, I don't think, what the manipulation that occurred that last time, I don't think will be happening in the future, because the cat's out of the bag, people understand how that game is played, and I don't think that, I think there'd be much more concern about the fact that these people who are League of City Representatives represent the cities, they don't represent a particular senator, or a particular legislator, or a governor, they represent the cities themselves, so... I think, in that sense, the good senator did us a good favor by sort of tipping his hand, because I don't believe they'll have the opportunity to do that in the future.
I have some ideas for the other two appointments that I will gladly share with the Governor.
Anyway, that's the latest on your Board and everyone.
Bud Cox?
Mine might take a minute or so. Yesterday...
You want me to go first?
Oh, he called on me. Yesterday, we had a subcommittee meeting to discuss the summit, the Gang Summit, December 6th, worked on an agenda, breakout sessions, speakers, made quite a lot of progress as far as planning that event. And it is a county-wide event, we have several county agencies that have stepped up and agreed to work on the committee and help out, and even sponsor and provide breakout sessions for the event. The business community stepped up in a big way. As you know, Stan Sensen, who was here this morning, made one phone call, or a few phone calls, and had, there was rumors of 300 to 400 people that attended that event outside of Vittila Hall, it was actually 540 people were in and out of that event that one Wednesday evening. So the business community has agreed to step up in a big way yesterday. He actually proposed underwriting, or coming up with a way to underwrite the entire event through a fundraiser into this month, or the middle of, actually, in the middle of next month. So the business community is stepping up in a big way to help out financially. We have chosen for the theme of the Gang Summit, Step Up, and we've yet to decide whether it will be Step Up and be a part of the solution, or just Step Up. So we're going to work it on branding that, marketing that throughout the county to get people there. Now, the reason I'm bringing this up is, we would like to have each of the supervisors in their area contact each incorporated city, and also the unincorporated areas. We'd like to have a representative from the business community from each incorporated city, that actually would have a chamber, an elected official, and a public safety official to work with us on the campaign, and to help publicize this and get the information out to the people. So if you would think about who might be adequate for that, or who would work well at that, I would like to, you know, either go to Jed or myself with that information. At our last gang committee meeting, we had representatives from all five districts there, the first time that that had happened, and they came from countywide, unincorporated areas, incorporated cities, faith-based organizations... areas, the incorporated cities, faith-based organizations, so it was a very well-attended meeting. We had over 70 people at the last meeting last week. And so we're moving forward, seem to be making some progress on putting the summit together. The committees continue to work together, make progress in their respective areas, but it would be very helpful if we could have a business leader such as Mr. Simpson from each community, an elected official, and then a public safety person. Because right now, we have a couple of the cities that are very well organized and working to promote this and to promote the activities of the Tulare County Gang Committee. So if you could think about that and get back to myself and Jed, we'll work with you for that. But we already have, there's people already from all of the cities and mostly unincorporated areas already attending this, we just need to cherry pick the best ones and use them to help us get the word out.
Questions?
Yes. Are you contemplating in the unincorporated areas that you would use like the sheriff's office, perhaps a community-based officer?
Community-based officers.
Okay. Any other question? Connie?
Just, I was invited yesterday to the Government Affairs Committee for the Tulare Chamber of Commerce and made a presentation about this there yesterday. The DA was there and I drug him into my presentation, but they've already reacted. Some of us have community councils in our unincorporated communities that can make sure they get on the.
And we'd like to also, if we can, we'd like to go to them as well. That was one of the things we talked about yesterday after the summit, would break that down into smaller groups and to actually travel. Apparently Tipton had 600 or so people show up to a parents' night here a while back, they expected 60 and had 600, and so.
Sure it was Tipton.
I think he said it was Tipton.
Are you ready to go back to Pixie, sir?
I'll go back to Pixie. I'm not asking him for money now.
Okay.
She, for those of you that don't know, she's sick the wolves on me, she sent me into, she sent me into the wolf's tin.
I did not do that. You chose to go to Pixie without asking me. They called me and complained.
Okay.
My turn. Real quick, as you all know, Tulare County is the host of the San Joaquin Valley Regional Association of California Counties meetings. We had one in April, we will have our fall meeting beginning tomorrow evening through Thursday, and then follow it up Friday morning with a business meeting. Our clerk, Michelle, and our staff has been invaluable in helping us to put this meeting on, looking forward to it. We believe we've lined up a, some excellent presenters and have built in some time on Friday morning for not only the business meeting that we usually have with this association, but a presentation about the regional blueprint. And it will either be Margy Kern, who's spearheading that from the Merced Cog, and/or Ted Smalling from ARCog. So I know we talked yesterday in the TCG meeting about more opportunity for elected officials to weigh in on this regional blueprint, this will be a great opportunity. Unfortunately, not every county will be represented at the meeting.
I was going to ask you that. How do we do the northern counties?
Well, you know, they're, San Joaquin will not be attending, and at this point, as far as I know, Stanislaus either. I've about given up on Stanislaus, Stanislaus, I haven't completely given up on San Joaquin. I think we're seeing actually the effects, though. You know, some counties have term limits for their boards of supervisors, and one of those is San Joaquin County, eight-year term limit, and, you know, our stalwarts and those that used to attend, two were termed out, and two are on the verge of being termed out and have found things to occupy their attention. One of them's, you know, running for office, but that's what affected us the most, I think, with San Joaquin County and Stanislaus.
Well, there's a lot of new guys in Stanislaus.
Yeah, yeah. We used to.
You think that would encourage them to come to the city?
They'd want to come and find out.
Well, in addition to the usual contact, I sent, I have not personally called them, but I did send them individual emails, and we tried very hard to recruit at least one of them to attend. For some reason, the CAO's meeting has been scheduled at the same time.
Elsewhere.
Elsewhere.
That probably doesn't help.
I told them they should have rescheduled it to, even if they wanted to meet at the same time, they could have done it in the same location, at least they would have been there. But anyway, that's my report for that, and so we're all attending. Thank you.
Maybe we need to look at once a year, too. That's a possibility. Last week, we had the Harvest Festival in Exeter, which was a grand parade, and it was a good time. It was very interesting. And before the week, a couple days before that, the Red Hat Society of Exeter donated a city clock to the city of Exeter, and if you have a chance to look at it, it's great, and it has inspired other communities to look at, any organizations to sponsor a clock in other cities.
Are you a member of the Red Hat Society?
No, no.
Mr. Chairman?
Not old enough.
Oh, you're not old enough? Okay.
You can ask Supervisor Ennis, but I'm not old enough.
We got the Buck Schaefer.
Where's that?
In Porterville.
Where's that? Where's the clock at?
It's right off of Highway 65, right by the water tower. Close to water tower. And other than that, I want to announce duck season starts Saturday. So with that, council, do we have a need for closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, you do. You have items A through D as indicated on your board's closed session agenda and regular agenda and addendum. Items B and C are off agenda, I do not anticipate any announcements.
Hide your duck.
Better hide your.
Supervisor Cox.